Good morning. Today is Friday, September 14th, 2018. It's nine o'clock in the morning. I'd like to call this order, or call this meeting of the Logan County Commissioned to Order, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item three, any citizen desiring to be heard? Hearing none, we'll move on to item four, consideration and possible action on approving minutes of September 4th, 2018.
I'll move with approval.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item five, open sealed bid for ballot printing in consideration of possible action on awarding said bid.
We have two bids from, one from Royal Printing and one from Midwest Printing.
That's saying this is for the election board?
Yes.
I don't have a stapler. Definitely need that. Normally I only get one bid.
Okay, all the way to the back here. You want to look at these? Can you look at them over in the corner?
I already know which one we're, we're helping.
Now, now, hang on a second. You can't, you really can't say that. I mean, you haven't looked at the bids yet, so it'd be difficult for you to make that.
This is gonna make more sense to you than it is me. Eight point five by fourteen, fourteen cents?
I got the same thing here, fourteen cents.
Fifteen cents?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
I got sixteen on the eight and a half by nineteen.
Fourteen?
Fourteen on the amended ballot.
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Sixteen.
Fourteen?
Fourteen.
Fifteen?
Fifteen and sixteen. So, what I've got here is Midwest Printing and you've got Royal.
Do you want to look at them over in the corner or up here?
Staple those. You got the staple.
We'll just move on till you have time to look.
All right. Good idea. We'll come back to item five. Item six, consideration and possible action on awarding bid 2019-FD-1 for one used structural pumper apparatus for city fire department table from August 31st, 2018. I suspect you guys have had a chance to look at that and have a recommendation?
Yes, when I looked toward, uh, we'll accept it. We went down, I took a chance, go down, look at the truck.
Okay.
I'll accept that bid.
Y'all are satisfied and pleased?
Yes, sir.
I'll move with accept that one and only bid?
I'll second.
Just for the record, the bid is on a 2,000 Spartan fire truck for $65,000.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes without objection.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate your input. Item seven, consideration and possible action on approving resolution accepting Blackberry Springs Road, Raspberry Trail, Blueberry Trail, Cranberry Road, Blackberry Springs Edition for county maintenance as time and money allows. Is this like a fruit salad?
I'm sorry.
He says it like a fruit salad.
A fruit salad, yeah. Well, it's a lot of berries, there's no doubt about that. We can't, that addition is split with no roads in between, a couple of other roads that are part of that addition. We've already accepted those, Huckleberry and, uh, let's see, Dewberry, I think. And, uh, and we've also, uh, East Valley Road, we've accepted going in that addition. They have one entry that they're in, it's getting to be a serious problem, so they did a petition asking that we be, that they be accepted for maintenance as time and opportunity allow. They understand the dynamics, uh, and, uh, we'd like to help them out. But we've already got about half the addition now, so I'd like to make a motion to accept this, please. Oh, it is a public access road. They do not have an HOA.
And I guess they've got an issue that you're, you got budgeted to take care of it for them if this is accepted, is that what you said?
They would do some donations to allow for materials to be brought in. Their number one road there has got great big concrete type rock in it and they drive to the side and whenever rains they get stuck going in and out. So, what are you saying?
I mean, I don't mind seconding, but I do want to continue the discussion.
Sure.
We've got another option now in that circumstance where if they want to donate money to buy the materials, the county can enter into a specific cooperative agreement with them to fix, fix an issue.
Which individual would I do that with?
No, with all of them, with all of them.
As a group, so they need to form an HOA?
No.
Okay.
No, you can do that with a group of individuals.
I put that to them as an option and they would, they elected to do the petition.
So, I mean, so then I'm curious on who's gonna give you the money? I mean, there's not an HOA.
Individuals.
Individuals, right, so I mean, it would be the same individuals that would donate the funds.
One way or the other.
Exactly. But the thing, I think that Monty and I both kind of are a little bit, it's your, it's your, it's your district, Mike, we'll do whatever you want to, within limits, right? But, uh, you know, the more of these roads we accept for maintenance and knowing that we don't have the money to do it, uh, the more financial obligations we have for people that come after us, right? I mean, I'm dealing with that now down in South County. I've got a lot of older neighborhoods down there that were automatically accepted when they were built. Um, and they haven't had those roads touched in forty years. Now I've got to try and plug catch-up and, uh, and fix those roads for them because there's a lot down there that don't have HOAs either and, and they say it's a county responsibility. But anyway, um, if you've already considered that, I guess I'll, I'll second.
You know, that, that's my issue is we run around and set all these housing additions for county maintenance. To me, we're taking money from the section line roads, that is our responsibility and we're having to put into these housing additions. And even though they donate money, you know, the next group of people will buy them houses and they're gonna say, well, I hear you passed a resolution accepting these roads, I'm not donating nothing, it's your responsibility to take care of the road. And my big problem is every time we had set one of these down in y'all's district, next time we re-district, it's in my district, now I'm the one doing it. And, you know, that's really, I'm against the whole process. But, I mean, if you already got half of it, I can see you wanting to take in the rest of it, I understand that, but I think we need to draw a line someday and say, hey, we got more Wicksay Grace over, because we can't do what, we can't do our jobs now. So I have petitions from three other roads that I have not brought to you specifically because of that. And I will agree with you to an extent, uh, but there is traffic on these roads, they do have a ADT, uh, they do pay whatever taxes that they do pay. And I look at the, uh, what, the requirement to do the most for the most people, you still don't, you know, you still have to do for the least amount of people, but, uh, one of the things that it does is that when a road deteriorates like that, it devalues the entire county and it makes us, it makes us into one of those third world nation status type roads in there. A lot of these people, they get older, they're on, on subsistence income, they can't maintain it, and the whole thing goes to crap and then we have the, the, the bad elements, if you would, who move in and become little pirates in their head. Well, I, I understand all that, but still, when they bought that house, they knew that that wasn't a county maintained room.
Right.
And sure, they're gonna petition you to accept it for county maintenance because they don't want to maintain it. So after you do that, you know, it says that money, retirement money allows, you know, the next generation, they, they ain't gonna read that, they're gonna say, too bad you accepted, it's your, your responsibility. So you can't depend on that donation.
Right.
But if this is what you want to do, it's in your district.
I'd like to do that.
Probably maybe support that.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Repose.
I might have to vote, no.
Okay. Motion passes two to one. All right. Item eight, consideration and possible action on approving FY 1819 juvenile detention contracts. Use services of Bryant County, thirty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents a day, OJJS Garfield County at forty dollars a day.
I'll move with approval.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Aye.
Without objection.
I was thinking, sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. That's what Troy was saying earlier about, you just sign that.
Wrap me up.
Blackberry Springs, yeah.
Hey, more we sign there, isn't it?
Yes, sir. Slade, you have any luck?
Yes, with the Royal Printing, since they are penny cheaper on the eight and a half by nineteen, Royal Printing is, it also lets us choose the colors on, if I notify them before the printing goes to the file, I like the Royal Printing.
Okay, item six, or, excuse me, item seven.
Five.
Uh, five.
Five.
Thank you. For sealed bid 2019-5, the recommendation was for what?
Royal.
Royal Printing.
I like the motion.
For Royal Printing. I'll second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. I thought we were on the Senate grid, I was there for a second, all these papers are flying around out here. of tort claim of Wes Coffin?
Coffin.
Coffin.
I'll move with knowledge.
What's the story on that?
The one that hit a pile of shale.
Oh, that's over in my district, yes.
I'm glad you had a story.
I didn't say where, you, you added that.
No, no, it was.
The pile of shell.
Shale, yes. Right, thank Troy for the influence there.
No, I'm always afraid, I get shell and shale.
I'll second.
And it's shale.
Shape. Somebody, somebody put those piles. I'd move with all of them, so.
No, I second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passes without objection. Item ten, consideration and possible action on acknowledging receipt of notice of tort claim on, of the estate of Joseph Softoka. Softoka or so?
Sabaka, I think.
Whatever.
Yes.
I'll make the motion when I was, you want to get more about it?
Yeah, I do, is that another pile or something?
Yeah, actually, this is one that, that is not going to end up being involvement of the county. Um, this is alleging, um, the death of a person improperly and, and it's really about the hospital.
Is this the ambulance hospital issue?
Yeah, and, and they have now served this to every entity in the state that they possibly can.
This is the one that was, you got a copy of it, you got everybody.
You three received them individually, they did not serve the board formally, but I have already sent it off and am post-going to deal with it, so.
Put it in their pile.
Trying to get me in trouble. It's not a hard job, by the way. Okay.
Did someone second that?
Yeah, I think so. I'll second it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passes without objection. Item eleven, consideration and possible action on resolution appointing requisitioning officers for various accounts.
So I have two for requisitioning cash and fire department in District One.
I'll make the motion with approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item twelve, consideration and possible action on resolution appoint receiving officers for various accounts.
District Attorney.
I'm against it. Was that like a negative thing?
Probably with approval, second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item thirteen, consideration and possible action on approving the following temporary road crossing permits for brickman fast line.
I'll make the motion with approval, second.
There are four of them. Looks like they're all in your area of mind. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
You didn't, Mr. P.
All right, item fourteen, consideration and possible action on approving the following permanent road crossing for core utilities, eight inch water line crossing Simmons Road, point zero one miles west of Bryant Road on section thirty-six, fifteen north and three west.
You for it or against it?
I might as well.
I'll make the motion with approval, second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Thank you. Correct the title. Okay, item fifteen, consideration and possible action on consent agenda.
Here we go.
Let the signings begin. Well, then the fire department stepped up, you got the printer involved, or did y'all print that one? You got the picture?
Yeah, no, they, they did that.
So the sales tax money could go into good use then.
Or the fear Troy wanted to.
Yeah, hadn't considered that one in a day or two. How'd that discussion go for?
Time will tell, but I had pretty favorable response.
Normally, normally it would be good. Yeah, education takes place, but oftentimes you can get instruction and not education at the same time.
Like he can hear but sometimes not listen.
Huh?
He can hear but not listen.
Huh?
You got it, Ken.
Yeah.
Doesn't happen.
I said, I said halfway, that's a lot of my work finishing down.
Doesn't happen very often, but.
Might as well let this play out.
Like my granddaughters, I'll be reading and my, they'll be watching something on TV and I'll have it turned way down. And they'll say, can you turn that up? And I'll go, huh? After about the third time, then they.
Yeah.
You're being sarcastic. They got, they know big words for little girls. The six-year-old's favorite big word is cornucopia.
Very rude.
So it's a big word for a little girl, she just, I can even say cornucopia.
Don't teach them Supercalifragilisticexpialidocious or play the song for them, it takes a while for that one to wear off.
You can't get the other head.
And then don't tell them how to ask Alexa to play it.
Troy, I can't remember, did we do something with beer shells on Sundays in Logan County? Wasn't there something?
We had a ballot question two years ago to allow liquor by the drink on Sunday.
Allow six-point beer to be sold on Sunday.
Okay.
Um, in fact, the, with all the new laws, where did I see the chart? I think I even printed it out. It listed every county and it has a legend as to what their rules are gonna be. The only thing with Logan was Christmas and Easter Sundays are out. Us and one other county fall into that as our only regulations for those two days. There's some issues in some other counties, though.
On the Sunday deal or?
Yeah, well, the mix-up because of going to the high point, not being allowed because their language was specific.
One of them signed a lot of licenses.
I've had a lot of email requests for the inspection issue.
So is, is there a higher tax collection on six-point beer than three-point?
I don't think so.
Just a higher self?
I don't deal with ABLE stuff, so.
Yeah, higher point sale. So just like if the stores that have the, the three-point two still on the shelves are, they're able to sell it, but it's gonna be at a different tax rate.
While the county can impose enable tax, just like it can impose a hotel motel tax, Logan County does not, yes. You, there's a few counties that have hotel motel, but we're not one of them.
Now, the municipal.
The what?
Municipal, uh, eight percent, state, is that the same for the county?
I think.
I think it's five.
I think it's five. I think there's only like three maybe or four that, that have that.
Yeah. I never thought of that, did you? See the country's up there.
Now, there's, there's taxes out there that we do not impose in Logan County for county collection.
Going on vacation, sometimes the tax goes that long. Sports fee, county fee, city fee, parking fee.
Share.
Fee share.
But those are fees.
Well, I've been taxed, taxed pretty much as they have my business.
Just twenty-one percent.
I'll move with approval of the contingent items.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
I lost my damn where to go.
Sixteen, consideration and possible action on doing claims, right?
Claims. Thank you. Let me share it for a minute. I think there's in here someplace, I buried it probably.
Try signing.
I called it a good sign.
Sign that where you're at.
Fine, just.
There's a backup.
You're a nice guy.
I'll move with approval of the claims.
A second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. Seventeen, consideration and possible action on approving purchase card payment for September
Can I get you the paper to sign? Cause I forgot it. This, this new procedure and I'm not used to it.
We're gonna, we're gonna take no action on item seventeen. Uh, all right. Item eighteen, any citizen desiring to be heard? Hearing none.
Those are claims?
Claims. Item nineteen, comments, announcements, questions by the Board of County Commissioners.
Me and the sheriff went and done a pie and cake contest, it was all pretty good. Sure wasn't a lot of pie and cake to eat.
Yes, it was. You guys represented well, didn't you?
It was a horrible job. Well, I thought it was a pie eating contest, sheriff thought it was a donut thing, but they were.
We worked it out.
He said, I'd never enter a pie eating contest with you, Monty. So what do you mean by that?
He just doesn't like to compete with the commissioners.
They did come up with some good designs on them cupcakes and stuff.
They did. So you guys were judging the, how pretty the cupcakes were, is that what?
Yeah, appearance, texture. Yeah, appearance, texture, taste. Yes.
All of that.
Flakiness of the pie crust.
What apple pie that we had down there was...
You didn't get an apple pie, did you? I didn't have the apple pie, but, uh, the grand champion, what was it? A peanut butter, no, a banana, banana cake.
Man, you guys had it top. Peanut butter and banana cake.
But also, uh, the grand champion on the cake was, uh, lemon.
Ooh.
Unbelievable.
Ooh.
Yeah, unbelievable.
Alright, any other comments, announcements, or questions by the board? Hearing none. I'll entertain the motion on item twenty.
I'll move with your turn.
Second. Your turn.